I'd like to open the public hearing on sewer rates. We are planning on tabling it to the next meeting. And we will accept any comments from citizens, if any comments. If you'd like to make a comment, go ahead and step to the podium.
I will make the comment that it's actually not sewer rates. It's the sewer impact fee. And that is proposed to be doubled. That's what's on the table right now. But it is going to the next Cal meeting for further discussion.
Any comments? None? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the meeting. Mr. Burris.
Here to lead us tonight in prayer is Pastor Ben Seawald from Emmanuel Baptist Church in Springdale. Pastor Seawald, thank you so much for being here.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus, your Son, who has given himself for our sins and who we read in the Book of Revelation as the firstborn from the dead, the ruler of kings on earth, the Lord's. And we praise your name. We glorify your name. Lord, we lift up to you all those here tonight who you have delegated a portion of your authority to rule over this city of Tonnytown. And the way that we conduct that, Lord, is in this democratic process, we just pray that each one would represent well and serve those, Lord, who have put them in place. Ultimately, knowing, Lord, that they are serving you as well. And we just pray that this meeting would be conducted in the spirit of love, love for you. And as a result, Lord, love for neighbor that would come out in humility, Lord. We pray for humility, to listen well, to have the mental energy to hear what others are saying and to listen well, register what's being said. And we pray for wisdom, Lord, to make good decisions on behalf of the people of Tonnytown. Well, we pray that the meeting would be marked by the mindset of Christ, which is though he was in the form of God, he did not count that something to be grasped, but humbled himself, taking on the form of a servant, being found in human form. He became obedient to the point of death, even death on a cross. Lord, help us to have this mindset, each one here. Lord, that we conduct ourselves in a way that is not selfishly ambitious or just seeking our own interests, but considering the good of others, even counting others more significant than ourselves as Jesus Christ has done. We pray that you would be glorified in every word spoken in the thoughts that we think. Lord, may you have all the glory and honor and may this meeting be profitable and productive. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. Hey, I'd like to open the City Council October 21st, 2025 meeting. Roll call.
Mike.
Tim.
Yeah, here.
Larry.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Misty.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, I need to ask Justin a quick question. Do we need to vote on moving that to the next meeting?
To the...
The public hearing to the...
No, it was tabled at the Cal, I believe, the impact fee. James, is that... James, if I remember, the impact fee at the Cal was tabled to the next Cal.
That's correct.
Okay.
Then, yeah, there's nothing else that needs to be done.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, I was not at that meeting. I had a childhood friend that had passed away and I was at her funeral, so I apologize. All right, approval of the agenda?
I'm so sorry. I don't approve of the agenda, but I'll explain why quickly. I am not the co-sponsor of Danny's issue, Mr. Montez's issue, council member. And he's not the co-sponsor of mine. I don't mean any disrespect to the councilmen because I'm not necessarily against the issue. I have no idea how I'm going to vote on that issue. But city council members do not need to co-sponsor other issues that they bring to a meeting. I was told someone said that this was needed and that that person had spoken to our attorney, but that's not at all what the law says. So I called our attorney, Mr. Eichman, and he confirmed that this practice is nonsense. Moreover, council members don't and can't hold each other on issues, so it would be impossible for the two of us to bring an issue to vote together. So I would like the second names removed from each of those agenda items. If that change is amenable to the rest of you, I'm happy to vote on the remaining portions of that agenda.
So noted. Is there any objections?
Justin, is that...
Well, I think the question was what... Yes, you can certainly vote and decide how you want your agenda laid out. I think the question was whether there has to be a second listed. There's not the requirement in the code that I'm aware of. The law doesn't specify. The law leaves it up to the council on how they want to decide to have agenda items placed. So that's what the situation is. But I think if you all don't want to have the second on there, that's up to the council.
Up to the council, not to the mayor.
It's up to the... Yeah, the council has to approve the agenda.
Gotcha.
So if you want them, the council can have them there. If you don't want them, the council can have them there.
So for tonight's agenda, at least, I so move that those co-sponsor names are removed.
For each item, not just ours?
For each council member item. I believe that that was only you and I, Councilmember Montez.
It looks like everything has a co-sponsor and a sponsor. Some of the things I see James named next to. Some of it, I see Mark's name next to it. Essentially, it would be the mayor's point, and they're the ones speaking on behalf of that.
I have no problem with that. The thing I do have a problem with is saying that I'm a co-sponsor of a thing that I am not, or that you are a co-sponsor of a thing that you are not.
I hear you. Those are the two most important ones to you, but...
That's correct.
The whole entire thing.
If you want to do the whole thing, I'm fine with that as well.
Do we have a second?
We don't even have a first.
I made the first.
Oh, we made the first. So are we going to... Now, it's just for the two. And then Danny's talking about all three.
That is the motion I have made, yes, ma'am.
I will second that motion.
Roll call.
Tim.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Mike. Oh, sorry. Misty.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Approval of the September 16th, 2025 city council minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Roll call.
Larry.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the financial report. Ms. Arda Money?
Okay, this is for September 2025. City general income was $640,087.20. Expenses was $527,716.51 with a positive operating income of $112,370.69. Water and sewer income was $643,801.92. Expenses was $444,227.55 with a positive operating income of $199,574.37. Streets income was $106,398.78. Expenses was $55,193.51. Left a positive operating income of $51,205.27. And some of those large expenditures were for building repairs, dues, engineering fees, material and supplies, and some repairs and maintenance. And that's all I have on that.
I have a question.
I will try to answer it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. There's a payee at Southern Software and Aloft Tech. I'm just not familiar with who that is.
That would be the... Here's Chief. There you go.
There he is.
For the police department, that is what's referred to as a CAD system, computer aided dispatch. So it's through Washington County. It's over the past couple of years, they've opened this up to where other departments are able to get this software to where essentially as dispatch is taking calls, 911s and entering calls, we're seeing the same screen. So we can see call notes before their dispatch. We can see addresses and informations before to relay it over the radio, as well as go in and enter in information to it, form of notes or anything else. So it also provides vehicle location for the officers and call routing and such.
Okay, and that's annual, that's monthly, that's quarterly? How often?
It's going to be annual, but a lot of this is the upfront cost for installation, training and things like that.
Okay.
And it's going to drop.
All right. And you think that it's important enough we've got it and you've got the money in your budget and...
It was budgeted for for this year. And here in the next couple of weeks, we'll have it all installed and be live.
All right, awesome. Look forward to seeing it. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Arda Money.
Any citizen comments on this? Seeing none? All right, we'll move on. Museum?
Good evening. The Board of Directors from Tonnytown Historical Museum met on October 6th in City Hall. And we've got a lot of stuff going on this fall, starting with Springdale Schools collaboration. We are working with Holland Tyson Middle School as well as Walker Elementary School to create a new discovery box for the museum to loan out and to take to offsite events. The students have chosen to focus on the traditions and events of Tonnytown. And we're excited to see what they create. I got a little text from one of the teachers saying the kids have created a board game. So I'm really excited to see what they come up with. This is totally student driven. This is what they want to see in a box. So they're going to come to us later on this week and do some more research. Our digitization project, we kind of have it on pause while we get our catalog launched. Julie has been working diligently to make sure that all the information that will show up on the viewer side is 100% correct. We've got a couple of beta testers that have gone in and just done some like spelling checks and different stuff like that. But we're really excited to make this public so that way everyone can see what we have in the museum. Our visitors for September was 55, including the Wild and Unstructured Homeschool Group. That is 15 more than last year in 2024. I am actively working on our exhibits for 2026, centering around the 250th anniversary of America as well as the Veterans of Tonnytown. And there will be a little preview of the Veterans of Tonnytown exhibit at the upcoming Palantusmere on November 9th. So just a small, little taste of what you'll see in the full exhibit that is going to open in January of next year. And on Palantusmere, it is November 9th, 8:11 a.m. to 1 p.m. And we really hope to see you all there. If you are a veteran, please come. I will be shaking all of your hands and asking for photos. We are really excited. Once again, we're partnering with all of our local restaurants to feed everyone and make sure no one goes home hungry. We'll also be launching the catalog then. So people will actually have a chance to come up, talk with myself and Julie, see what's uploaded currently and kind of have a little preview at the event. Our fall programming, we had Simbols Day at Shiloh Museum of Ozark History that was attended by first through third graders. We saw probably about 500 students that day. It was a long day. And they always enjoy doing the simulated grape stomp. We put fake grapes in a barrel and they get to stomp some energy out for a few seconds. We are working with the Springdale Public Schools for the upcoming Steam Fest that is happening this Thursday. So I will be offsite in the evening, showing off our discovery box and interacting with thousands of students that have signed up to participate. And one note on our board, Ms. Chelsea Stewart, we are sad to announce she is leaving us. She is leaving the state. She has accepted a position in Texas and she will be moving at the end of the month. So we are looking forward to kind of readjusting and filling her position as co-treasure.
Can't we overrule that as a council and say she cannot move?
I wish. I love Chelsea.
Is that how that works?
I wish she would stay. Whenever I got her text, I was like, no, Chelsea, you can't leave us.
And I'm looking forward to seeing the game board, whatever it is.
I know. Brittany Berry texted me. She said they came up with a game. And so I'm excited to see on Friday when they come in to see kind of what they've got planned out. And then they're going to come and ask questions. I'll give them photos and research and we'll keep working through the school year.
Point five. Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Does anyone have any comments? Counsel? Okay, moving on. Police?
The month of September responded to 869 calls for service, filed 21 accident reports, served 69 warrants, 1351 outstanding on the warrants, over 1.6 million outstanding fine amounts for those warrants. Training hours, 3,505 for the year, 125 total citations, seven speeding, 60 other traffic citations, 27 criminal, 31 improper driving, city ordinance, 492 total warnings, 208 for speed and 284 for other traffic warnings. Any questions?
Does any citizens have questions or comments on this? No, counsel? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to the fire. Chief Grubbe?
Fire report for September. We had 48 calls, 26 were EMS, six were fire, seven MVAs, three false alarms, four service calls, two canceled entrouts. September 2025, we had 490 calls for service to date. September 24, 410, increase of 80 calls year to year. Average response time is a minute and 34 seconds and average on scene arrival time, four minutes and 25 seconds.
All right. Any comments on this? No, counsel?
Thanks, Chief.
All right, moving on to Public Works.
Good evening. The report for September, October, start with the 412 waterline project. I've spoken about this a time or two and just wanted to let you know it's still ongoing. Garver had presented a final bill to Goodwin &amp; Goodwin about two months ago, and they rejected it feeling that we owed them more than what they came up with as far as the final payment. So they said they were going to contact their attorney, but fortunately, we have not heard anything from them since. And that's, like I said, that was August 19th. On the water storage tank project, I met with Landmark Tank last week and they informed me that they will be completing the project significantly sooner than they expected. He's talking maybe May timeframe.
Because you had said December, the year or sometime.
Yeah, October was when the contract is up. But yeah, they're thinking maybe as early as May. So I had to come back and get started on the funding with ANRC for the additional monies that we need. I'll have a resolution to you next Cal for that to move forward. Brush Creek Sewer Interceptor. This project's still in design. Hopefully, we'll see easement documents here fairly soon and we can start working on those. Mr. Gregory with Garver is going to present an update on this project as well as the Highway 112 widening project at next month's Cal meeting. Water service area expansion. As I think I said at last meeting, we have a court date to start trying to settle that of August of next year unless something comes up before then. And I added another section on the bottom of the report called ADEQ SSES Follow-Up Sewer System Evaluation Study, basically to keep you up to date on what we're doing on that. Recommendations from the report included updating the filter media and the air scrubber at the lift station, cleaning of the gravity sewer line from the landfill to the lift station and making repairs to a few manholes. As I recently reported, we're working with Carbon Chicken. And as a matter of fact, I have Richard here tonight with Carbon Chicken at this point. I would like for him to come and give you an update on the project.
Double team, that is necessary. Yeah, my name is Richard Ems, Carbon Chicken Project. Our innovation farm is really just right down the road a couple of miles from here. So we were asked by Public Works Department a couple of weeks ago to be able to try to offset, mitigate the emissions coming off of the lift station per community complaints. So we're really happy and proud to be partnered with the community, be able to have a nature-based solution for this. We did first a baseline air test for the area. We've got it on our team. Engineers, the air testing was led by Dr. Srinivas Gyanthe. And so we tested separately for ammonia as one separate test and another test for sulfates and VOCs, those volatile organic compounds. So a spectrum of about 64 tests. Those have been sent in. It takes two weeks to get the results back. So we should have those tests back. We're anticipating this week. So that'll be our baseline, what had existed before we deployed our solution. So based on the community complaints, we're going to find out what is in the air that smells so bad, basically. This will be the scientific lab analysis to tell us exactly what that spectrum is. We then, after we got our baseline test, we then cleaned out the media that was in the air scrubber, which I understand hasn't been used for quite some time. We put our solution in there, which is, again, something called biochar. I think it's carbon. So think about just carbon. I have a sample, I think I gave some to the mayor previously. But if anybody wants to, I know Nina wanted to smell it and I don't think you could smell anything from the biochar itself. Put it in these socks and wound it up and put it in the air scrubber. And we turned the air scrubber back on after we choked it down with a baffle that is on the air scrubber so that the air going through it is slowed down. What we want is residence time in the scrubber itself. So this material can sequester those emissions as it's going through. It's a very, very porous material. When I was here before, I think I showed some pictures of that. It's very, very porous. Looking at it under a scanning electron microscope, you can see how many pores inside of pores there are. So it's known to be very effective sequester and filter media. Again, it's made from wood. So that's why it's a nature-based solution. So after, when we get the baseline test back, we will now then retest. And so we have an A/B test, what the status of the air was prior to deploying our solution and then after. And we're going to compare the results to see what percentage of these VOCs that we're sequestering. So, yeah, I've got plenty other information or answer any questions that you might have. But that's essentially what's happened so far.
Okay, any citizens have comments on this or questions on this?
I'll segue in. Do you want me to ask from here? Do you want me to come?
Oh, come to the podium, please. Name and address.
Yep. We did. For your member. Yep. Tammy Graham, 1984, South Panalto. Am I limited?
Yes.
All right. I received documentation from a FOIA request on the Carbon Chicken biochar project. I've several questions. First, the lift station continues to emit odors. On the 12th of this month, at 3:00 in the morning, I called police. They came out to the house. Officer Seymour and Bowline arrived. They could smell it, they said. But then when the fire department got there, they couldn't smell it. Interesting thing about the smell is that it is intermittent. When the newspaper article came out on the 24th of September, the severity of the ammonia smell decreased overall. It has become inconsistent in timing and severity. I'm sure you've talked to Mr. Small about what they're doing on their end, if they're doing anything on their end. From Carbon Chicken, we have the following request. On the 3rd of June, you stated that you intended on a full spectrum of gas emissions to be tested. And you just described that. We would like to be provided a copy of the results. On the 3rd of June, you said that you were going to do a seat of the pants sniff test. That's in your email. As the smell is intermittent, and you show up at 1:00, you might not smell it. But if you come back to my house at 2:00 in the morning, you probably will. So here's my recommendation, that we citizens be included in your study to report, and on a report form, and a report form be created on Google or whatever, that will allow us to collect the time of day we smell it, the relative severity, the description of symptoms, location, wind direction, and et cetera. That's going to lend credibility to you and your product. And we would then feel like we are part of the solution and are finally being heard. I don't know why that couldn't happen. And from James, thank you, James, for all you've... You've been real helpful. According to email from Blake Small, they have been notified of any concerns regarding the improper list of the sewer system. Long story short, we'd like a copy of the letter that Attorney Eichman has drafted. Ellen Anderson of ADEQ has asked for a monthly report. We would request city council and citizens be provided with a copy of that report as well. We request this be made a critical priority and all aspects of this project be kept in full view of the public and city council. We ask Mr. Clark to give a report on progress at each city council meeting, as well as when concerns arise. If this can be done, perhaps Tonnytown could avoid more negative publicity. Perhaps a ceasefire agreement can be made between Waste Management so that at least one problem might be resolved on behalf of citizens. That is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
I think that was an excellent... Oh, I'm sorry.
Name, please.
Jody Harden. And I'm actually on White Oak Road, Ralph Harmon. Not in the city, actually.
And you are with Carbon Chicken.
And I'm the CEO of Carbon Chicken. Richard and I founded Carbon Chicken over two years ago. But I'm just responding to what Tammy just said. I think...
I'm sorry, I hear you.
I said I'm responding to what you just said. I think that's an excellent idea to let the community...
Thank you. Can you raise your mic?
I'm sorry. Yes, can you hear me now?
That's really appreciated.
That's, we appreciate it.
So, I think it's an excellent idea and Carbon Chicken can actually make that happen probably within a few days. We can create an app for your phone or your computer or whatever and you can go in there and log anything and we can all see the same app. And I can make that happen like really quick. So, if that's okay with the city, I mean, that would be something the city would have to hire us to do or we'll provide it as part of our deal. Because it's such an idea, such a great idea if the city council is okay with it. I mean, it would be just a few residents, I think, who would be logging in and, you know, reporting. But we're, we're going over there at 6:00 AM and 6:30 in the mornings and I'm not smelling anything. I mean, but I'm biased, I know I'm very biased. But I've been over there right at 7:00 AM for every morning since we've installed the filters and I haven't smelled anything. I think it's, I think we're, we're on to something. I don't want to say we've solved it, but it seems to be much better.
I know that any other citizen have any questions? Yes, ma'am? I've got two. Hang on just one minute, Mr. Lovett.
Move it back down. Michelle Eichler, 1851 South Panalto Road. So, just a couple of questions about it. So, you were talking about doing the air testing there on the material. And so, when you were doing the air testing, are you actually taking that biochar and sending it in for the testing to see what was collected in the biochar? Or are you just still getting the air?
Just right now, just the air.
Okay. So, it could depend on what is being put out or coming in, how the air fluctuates to...
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. And so, then my question also would be, you know, doing all these other studies before with ADQ and, and things like that, I know that certain samples that were collected, they had to be tested, analyzed within a certain timeframe or they wouldn't be as valid. And so, is that like all of this that is collecting on the biochar? Let's say you're going to test it again in two weeks. How are we going to know, like if it's a full two weeks cumulative, if some of those chemicals are dying out after a certain timeframe in the air?
So, it's just, we're taking air sample, which we've done baseline, we're testing our solution, the effectiveness of our solution. So, we will test again now that the solution's been running, it's been, air's been filtering. So, we're just testing the results and the effectiveness of what we put in there before and after A/B, standard A/B testing as it was. So, and I do, I do want to say, you know, this is a R&amp;D project. It's a research and development project. So, it's fairly novel, but there is a lot of white papers documentation on the effectiveness of biochar as a nature-based solution. But this is not, I just want to make sure folks know, we're not accumulating data that is court-defensible. This is, this is, that's why, Tammy, when you mentioned the sniff test, so that's one level. If you go out there and, you know, I, I went out there this morning, I said, wow, I can't smell anything. Of course, that was one time in there. So, it's good, I would invite anybody to go out there anytime and test it yourself using our olfactory senses. So, that's one level is to say, if Nina goes over there and says, wow, this is, I don't detect much happening these last few days. So, that's one satisfaction, so to speak. Our actual lab analysis will tell us scientifically what has happened A/B testing before and after. Was our solution scientifically effective? Not just, it smells better to me. Because everybody's sniffer has a different sensitivity there. So, yeah, just want to point that out. So, also point out that the biochar is, is carbon, that, that's really all it is. So, if anyone's ever used, you know, a Brita filter to, to filter their, their water, that's what you're using is, is carbon. Same, same thing here, it can filter water, liquids, and it can filter air. So, if you haven't used a Brita filter, then at least you've drank, have drank the water in this area. And that is also filtered from Beaver Lake that we all, all drink here. They use carbon also, anthracite, which is carbon to filter the water as well. So, it's, it's very, there's some history behind the filtration of this.
So, are you saying that it is totally going to filter these chemicals out or just kind of neutralize the smell?
We're, we're hoping both. And I don't, and when you say totally, we're going to find out what percentage. Maybe we're 75% less volatiles.
Okay.
We don't know yet until we do our second test.
So, are you doing some air samples before it hits the scrubber?
We did.
And then after it hits the scrubber?
We did testing by the road and a duplicate test right by the lift station tank. We did both of those to get our baseline and we'll do the same thing before. And keep in mind, this is just for the leachate that is right at the lift station. The landfill is a whole separate, we're not, the odors that come up there, those have not been addressed by, certainly by us at this time. So, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any council member? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lovett, you had this, we usually do not have a question-answer during this time. This is a critical subject, so I, that's why I'm allowing it.
Kenneth Lovett, 18702, Clearwater Road. We all know environmental issues are tough, no matter what. But whenever the baseline changes and you're not told about it, that makes other issues. And from what I understand, Waste Management hasn't talked to the citizens at all since two years ago. But what I understand, they're currently using sulfuric acid, diluting it into the liquid, into the leachate. Have you heard this?
I, no.
Okay. And, and whenever you use sulfuric acid, that adds a new level to the issues. Sulfuric acid is very bad stuff. And we're going to be talking about a pump later on to replace in the lift station. If you don't have the right metallurgy and you pump, your pump's not going to last 10 days. So, there needs to be a lot of discussion about this. Thank you all.
Anyone, any other citizen or online?
No.
Council, does anyone have any questions? No. I have one. If, if it is, if the emissions are still coming up and the carbon is covering them up, are the citizens still at risk?
So, I think that's what the, the lab tests are going to tell us.
Okay.
So, it, it's not likely they correlate. So, whatever's in the liquid leachate and off-gassing to create the smell is probably the same volatiles that are going to be in the air, similar at, at different levels. So, you, you could guess, but we're not going to guess, but you could, at this point, we can guess. If you eliminate the, if you don't smell anything anymore, you've probably affected the, the volatiles coming out of there. But we're going to find out with the lab test. That's why it's too, it's one thing to say, hey, the air smells a lot better here, great, we've achieved something. But are the volatiles still in the air that folks are breathing in?
Right.
And that's what the lab tests are going to tell us.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thanks.
So, I do got a quick question. You know, I seen in the budget item where we had a, we paid them $16,000. How long does that treatment last until we need to change out those carbon?
That was for a three, a three-month test.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we will be...
Yeah. Yeah. Most of that was la, the air lab tests.
To get your base.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Lot more expensive than liquid tests, unfortunately, so.
And last, last meeting, Mr. Clark said that they would, Waste Management would be taking care of that bill, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Building report?
I think I mentioned last time that we would see some residential building going on. If you haven't been out there and take a look at Bariloche, there's several homes being built on that subdivision. We saw an increase there of a couple different permits last month compared to 12 last year. So, we anticipate that. We've got a couple of final plats will be going to planning commissions. So, I look for the housing area to start to increase and start to get back to where we were a couple of years ago. On the commercial side, we still look strong. We've had a total of 108 permits so far this year compared to a total of only 92 last year or so. We're on our way to be able to look good on the commercial side. And as I mentioned, I believe residential will start catching up here in the next few months. Anybody have a question on that?
Any questions? Anything?
Okay, moving on to the community development report. Got a pretty large planning commission meeting coming up. We've got a variance request to set back there at 801 or 807 Vienna Centro. We've got a zoning request, this is for the new police station of a Fletcher, East Fletcher, five acres from C1A to C1. Then a rezoning request to rezone 256 Terrosi Street from R3 and C2 to agriculture. Then we got three final plats. I think we've got everything together. I mentioned something, possibly a special meeting, but everybody has complied. So, there'll be a final plat for Bariloche Phase 2, that's the back portion of Bariloche. Renly Ray Phase 1 and Palacero Phase 2. And then we'll be doing a preliminary plat of a Christina Estates off of Talgo Loop, which is 11 lot subdivision, about half acre lots that will be coming on the preliminary plat. We also have a public hearing at the planning commission on the street master plan. We're making a few changes to that. I think Brad put up over here what part of the master plan will be. So, if you get a chance, you can take a look at that. Anybody have a questions on the planning side of things? Okay, moving on to street and stormwater.
Quick question, Mr. Latham, so sorry. That Christina Estates on Talgo, you said that's 11 half acre lots?
Leave that half acre, yeah.
And who's developing that?
Brad, do you know?
I'll pop my head. Sorry.
No problem. Thanks.
That is not, has access to sewer, so that's why it's on those half acre lots. Okay, moving on to street and stormwater. I met with Burns and McDonald engineers, I think it was yesterday. They have the plans completed, so they'll be submitting those to RDOT. Soon as RDOT makes approval of it, then we'll be able to start buying up some right-of-way along with doing some utility relocation. As remember, we did receive 1.3 million, I think, from the, for that work from the regional planning, which would be for next year. So, funding is there for that project, at least for the utility and right-of-way. Fletcher Avenue continues to move forward. We're hoping to see quite a bit of work done here in the next month. Hopefully, they'll get some asphalt done before it snows, but that's going really well. We're still waiting for RDOT to approve our engineering contract for our amount of sidewalks. That's been the slowest thing for a to, total $155,000 work for almost a year's worth of trying to get through the whole process. Clink traffic signal, there is some work going on out there. If you can see, we were hoping to see the standards across the road, they haven't happened yet. I did talk to the contractor last week. He indicated he was going to try to get that done specifically this week since it's going to rain, I think, this weekend. So, we'll see how he does by the end of the week. But they're hoping to get that thing up and operational here pretty quick. I did want to mention about the, we had some discussion about the alternative route to the landfill. As you know, we'll be doing some testing on Clink. The guys have got the traffic stuff put together. Hopefully, maybe the end of this week or next week, we'll be able to start looking at the number, how much traffic we've got going on up and down there along with the truck around stuff, plus some overlay. You guys will hopefully approve that contract tonight on the drilling, figure out how much that road can handle. But Mayor and I were in a meeting, we go Friday, I think it was, wasn't it? Tim Conklin from Regional Planning organized a group of individuals, mainly leaders of the Northwest Arkansas, to talk about helping Tunnytown out, find an alternative route to the landfill. And I think the challenge is, is this, I mean, we're looking at almost probably $30 million to look at a road to be built. And the challenge is, is what happens if the landfill decides to close or it closes in five years? Or is it going to be 25 years? The question is, we don't know. So, when people are starting to look at, like the leadership council or somebody else is, is looking to help us build this road for this purpose, it's got to be longer than five years or 10 years. So, I think our next step will be to request some funding to do a feasibility study through Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning. So, we'll make application to that for next year and they will basically do some plans, play 30% plans and we'll see where it goes from there. But little bit disappointed, but I understand what they're talking about. I mean, if they're going to go on record to try to go out and raise $30 million for a road that maybe won't need for five to seven years, then, you know, it makes kind of ache on everybody's face and it only helps Tunnytown, doesn't help the regional landfill. Do want to mention that I did get a call from Jared Wiley. Jared Wiley is the director of RDOT requesting a meeting. So, we will be meeting with him November 4th. Hope we can talk a little bit about the challenges we have here along with 412. On the grants, we're still waiting for the FEMA grant, we haven't been pushed out. So, you know, with the government shutdown, who knows what, where everything's adding more. We will be applying for hazardous mitigation grant. Our next major drainage project will be Spinoto area. That flood's really bad and needs to be fixed along with the street down there. So, that'll be a 2026 project. Other things is, council will receive the final proposed budget 2026, you'll get it Friday. I know I sent you a preliminary today and, but there will be some explanation on some of the challenges that we're going to be looking at and some of the expenditures we're going to be looking at. So, I'll get that to you on Friday. And then we're, we're all in on the Halloween, the park. I believe Amber, we're probably got every place filled, correct? Yeah.
One spot left.
Yeah. Everything's filled, we're ready to go. Besides Amber, the Parks Commission or Parks Board has really stepped up to help us out. So, we're excited about getting that going. Anybody have any questions about anything?
Any questions? Anything? All right, thank you, sir. Next is comments from citizens. Any comments?
Mr. Burris, RLP Investments is a developer-owner.
Thank you. RLP as in Paul? Thanks.
Sorry for speaking out of order.
Patty, is there any online?
No.
Mick Wagner, 49, Pinewood Avenue. First of all, on the agenda, it says there's written comments that I had provided and I called it...
Where did you pull that?
I called it to the clerk's attention that out of 10 pages that I had requested to be posted, one was posted. So, maybe you could correct that for the public. In regards to the public comment I wish to make tonight, I emailed... In regards to the public comment I wish to make tonight, I emailed all of the council on 10-8, some outlines of what seems to be an illegal exaction. Your attorney who sits here tonight has billed the city for two meetings a month for January through June and appeared once. An attorney I talked to says that's a form of illegal exaction, which you may be familiar with because the lawsuit has just been settled, evolved around that. I provided the clerk a proposed resolution asking the council to seek reimbursement for $13,500. I do so because when the other illegal exaction suit was brought, I spoke for several months asking for the council to take action. I'm doing so again in a little more formal fashion and would hope that y'all would see the wisdom in doing that. I've also advised the legislative audit session that will be in your 2025. So perhaps they'll bring this up again, but I think if you'll be proactive, it might be considered a little bit better than what was wrote in your last order. As you know, there's a lawsuit pending on FOIA. At this point, I guess Mr. Ackman is still your attorney of record, and whether or not he's going to tend to continue, not sure how that's going to shape out, but we have requested some deposition dates, and I believe Mr. Ackman's going to be on vacation or something. So we're wanting to move forward on this and hope you people have, your council picked out whoever it may be that's going to represent us in that suit. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Kenneth Lovett, 18702 Clearwater Road. I hope you people got a lot more sense than he gives you credit for.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, on the agenda, please.
NWA Council Chair Doug Sprouts, he came here four years ago to push a landfill expansion. We don't need a road into the landfill, we need the landfill closed due to the hazards that continue to expose citizens. Has the council ever consulted any environmental air quality engineers? I haven't heard that they have. They're called air quality scientists, air quality specialists, air quality analysts, air quality technician, air quality inspector, air quality consultant. The council, as far as I know, has never consulted with one, and I don't believe any of us in this room are environmental engineers. If Tawney Town does not get a proper air quality expert to look over tests done by SITA and ADQ, you're negligent. You're still exposing people every day. Deciding to build new roads to waste management instead of addressing the real issues, I don't know after years of hearing issue after issue, why you'd continue to do that. We had one council person state previously in a meeting that there are cowards in this room. I believe many in the room tonight would agree with me when I say Tommy Granata was a good mayor, would you not? There is one coward in this room that was the reason, as I understand it, that Mr. Granata chose to resign several times. Although he returned to service communities after those resignations, the coward that caused Mr. Granata to feel the way he did, ready to resign, is still causing the same problems today and assaulted and threatened me physically a few months ago.
Point of order, please.
Since December 29, 2121, approximately 6:00 PM.
Mr. Lovett, according to our Code of Conduct 30.27, you cannot be speaking about anyone else in the room like that.
Okay, I'm not calling names, does that, the truth don't work?
It says any abusive or conduct by any person is prohibited.
Okay, and I guess the truth will set you free then, will it?
And we had a council person call point of order, so we have to, which I was, I had this ready anyway.
All right, can I get some more time?
Yeah, you got 13, 12 seconds.
Mr. Latham stood here two weeks ago and stated, you need to stop all litigation and talk to waste management. We did that at first, what good did it do? Monday, 10/20/25, at 7:35 AM, there was an unknown smell. Can I have 15 seconds for the interruption?
15 seconds.
Ma'am?
15 seconds for the interruption.
Okay. Well, guess I'm going to lose that too. Thank y'all for your time. There needs to be a lot of attention paid to things that are going on in this city. I'll send y'all this email.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on. Anyone else have a comment? And online, all right, move on. Approval of a city council member to waive the three reading rule for all ordinances on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve that, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Okay, there is no old business. We'll move on to number 13, new business. Number A, an approval of a resolution for 2025 city tax levy figures. As you guys know, this, this is a report, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Arda Muni, you go right ahead on this one.
Oh, yeah, the Washington County just wants to know, Millage, are you going to keep it at 3.2? As we, as we discussed at the Cal meeting, that's what you decided, but we need to vote on it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, B, approval of a resolution for the WCRAA interlock agreement. This is the one that I was talking about a while ago. This is the one that we do every year with EMS, and I don't think there's anything new. I think that Justin explained everything at the COW. Does anyone have any questions? Citizens? Council? Okay, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Roll call.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay. C, approval of a resolution to increase Waste Management's host fees. As you know, right now, we receive 55 cents from Waste Management. I will, we're wanting to increase it to $2.50, I believe is what was stated in the COW. Anybody have any comments on this?
I do.
Sir?
Mick Wagner, 409 Penzoil Avenue. You know, I thought fees had to be passed by ordinance to be binding. A resolution shows intent, so why wouldn't this be passed under an ordinance to make it a fee, just like you do on your water insurer fees or your impact fees? Counselor, a resolution's intent, an ordinance puts it binding, so shouldn't this be by ordinance?
We'll need to look into that since we're not answering questions. Okay, council?
Well, I mentioned the other day, I know that we've had support on this on a state level, that law has been changed, and we have every right to go to the maximum, there's no reason not to. I hear the citizen who made a good point, if that should be an ordinance, then that shouldn't be a problem for us to change that nature this evening, would it?
Well, what it is, is an agreement. There's a host, there's a host community agreement that dates back quite a ways, that has a First Amendment that was adopted in, so that the original host community agreement was in 1977, or 1997, excuse me. It was amended in 2017 with a First Amendment to that contract. What you have here is a resolution to authorize negotiation and execution of the Second Amendment that has the, that has the host fee increasing from 55 cents to 250. So that's, that's the, the host fee agreement is, is, comes via a host community agreement that this would amend, that's why it's a resolution.
Well, I'm, go ahead.
In other words, it's a contract, it's a contract, but, but that's the way this is, has been set forth since 1997. It's been handled through this, through this contract, so it would be an amendment to this contract.
I'm, I'm fine making a motion to pass it as it is, and if we need to make changes in the future, then so be it, but I think to get something moving would be prudent. So I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Roll call.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Can I, can I add something to that too, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up.
Thank you, counsel.
So it, it's a contract, it's an agreement, right? So it's going to take two parties to, to agree. So, you know, cities reached out to Waste Management to have a meeting about this particular issue, and if they agree, then, then that can go forward and be signed. Whether there needs to be code changes in the future, that may be something to, to look at, but this just kind of kicks off that, that process of reaching out to Waste Management to say, we want to amend this agreement pursuant to these terms. And so, you know, it, it's possible that they wouldn't agree and that you all would need to come back and, and discuss that, but in the past, you all have handled that through a hosting community agreement.
Yeah, I understand. I, I don't see it that way. I think the way that the law reads, and I'm not an attorney, you are, so you probably win this round, and the next one, and the next one after that. But if, if there is a law in place on a state level that allows us to raise it to a certain point, that doesn't sound like a negotiation, it sounds like the opportunity for the host city to, to get the appropriate compensation.
Right, the law change said that the host community agreements can no longer, they can only extend for a period of four years, ending on, what was it, Mayor, an even year in December. So the, the agreement needs to be renegotiated anyway because this, the last agreement was 2017. So the term has to be shortened to end on that statutory term now, and a new agreement has to be entered into, and so that's kind of at the point that we're at.
At any rate, I appreciate all that, and I think we can dot our i's and cross our t's later. My motion, and obviously it's passed, has happened, and, and we can move forward as necessary, but thank you for that.
Roll call.
We're done, move on to E.
That, that already passed.
D, approval of an ordinance to amend Tawney Town Codes 30.05 and 30.06. Mr. Montez.
I don't have anything else to add to it. It passed at the Cal, so I'd make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
I need to ask, is there any citizen comments on this? Seeing none, council has none?
I have a comment.
Oh, you have a comment, yes, ma'am.
You already made a motion, so I was going to table it, but, or asked if you could oblige me in tabling this for further reconsideration and discussion at the Cal, because I've been doing some research on agenda and citizen comment, a better way that we could do agenda and citizen comment flow, but I know this is not the time to discuss that, and I really, anyway, yeah.
Well, well, yeah, you're right. There's a motion, but there is no second, maybe.
Well, there's, I know this isn't the time for discussion, we, we did at the Cal, so that's why I would like to, I would like further discussion of this at the Cal, just because there's some, some research being done that I think would help us when we, when we design this. I think it'd be, can be designed a little bit better is what I'm trying to say, so, but because this isn't the time for discussion, I would just like to table it, but we have a motion.
Well, especially, I don't know that now is not a time for discussion. I think the Cal is sort of the time when we tear it all apart, but we still have every right to talk about it, so I'd love to hear what's on your mind.
I would really like to wait till Cal, I'd be more prepared at Cal.
Okay, understood. That's fine. I, you know, I'm, I'm struggling with it too, which is why I kind of want to hear what you have to say. I can be, I can see both sides of the issue, and I am unapologetically First Amendment. The First Amendment prevents our Congress from making laws that abridge the freedom of speech. In fact, for the First Amendment, it's extraordinarily short, but it does guarantee a certain, it does not guarantee, rather, a certain time or place where speech is protected. So US citizens may share their opinions, and yet there are some guidelines within those rights. So for instance, you can't use hate speech or vulgar language, that's a problem we've encountered here in this room. You can't be threatening to others, that's an issue we've seen here. You are guaranteed the right to speak before those who represent you, so it would be impractical, for instance, if I went to Massachusetts and spoke to a school board meeting that doesn't represent me or my kids, right? So for that reason, I think I can get behind what Mr. Montez has proposed, what Councilman Montez has proposed, and what you so eloquently argued about two weeks ago, but I wanted to make an alternative solution, and I understand this may need to be tabled because of it, I don't know, but why did those citizen comments remain at the start, but they were citizen comments, not public comments? They remained at the start of the meeting, and before each issue, every agenda item, anybody can speak about that agenda item, but non-Tawney Town citizens, which do not, or non-Tawney Town citizens couldn't speak about any item that was not a non-agenda item. So they, they can't speak before, but just like now, where we have the openness to allow people to communicate with us, I don't know about you guys, but I really often get emails from people who don't live here, who have all manner of opinions about what we do here. And I've gotten emails from as far away as Alaska, from people who want to tell us how we should do all manner of things, including, by the way, how our police department should run, right? Because, you know, they're in Alaska and they know what we should be doing. So I, I don't think giving somebody like that a voice in our already very long meetings, we had a marathon five hour meeting last time, I don't think it's prudent. I think this time should be family time, and anyone can contact us at any time, but this is a family meeting to discuss the family business of the city of Tawney Town, and I think citizens, and citizens alone, should get that focus here. So if you are a taxpaying citizen of Tawney Town, meaning you own property and you pay taxes here, or you're a business owner, then, I think then, you have a right to speak in that way. Otherwise, I think that we only receive those comments in a written form.
So I have a, I have a comment to that. I think that we should table it because it's.
That's fine.
We can tell that, that there are still some more issues. So what do we do with the citizens that live, I mean, my house is on the city limit line.
Do you pay taxes to Tawney Town? You, so you count, you're a citizen.
Okay, let me finish my statement, please. So my neighbor right next door, they still shop here at the convenience stores, they still eat here at the restaurants, they still buy gas here, and they pay those taxes.
Well, it's, it's a great question, but think about the Oklahoma line. If somebody comes from West Salem Springs into Salem Springs, Arkansas, and they shop in Salem Springs, Arkansas, that does not give them the full rights of the city of Salem Springs and the rights they're in as property paying, I'm sorry, as property owning taxpayers. So it's, we could do the same thing going to Missouri, or going to Oklahoma ourselves, but that's not what free speech means. Free speech is those who are represented. So again, it's something that I've gone around and around on, but I think we can still give people the right to speak on an agenda item, but if it's, again, we are here, we are elected by the citizens of Tawney Town. So that neighbor of yours that shops in Tawney Town doesn't vote for you. They probably would, it'd be a good move, great mayor, but it's not the same thing.
So, because I, I think that we could still build upon that, like I, I'm agreeing with some of what you're saying, but I, I think if we could have a good discussion at the next Cal, we may be able to come up with a good middle ground that maybe everyone might agree to, and so we have a motion. I know we don't have a second.
Well, I'm a little biased, you know, I did bring this to the other Cal, and we had time to prepare then, but I, I can understand why you would like to, to table it for the next Cal. That just.
You know, I did bring this to the other Cal, and we had time to prepare then. But I can understand why you would like to to table it for the next Cal. That just pushes it out even further and, you know, down the down the road. And I don't want to do that, but I can understand why you would you would like.
Let me make another suggestion. We can vote on it like it is. There's a motion on the table. If it passes or not, that that remains to be seen. And then, any changes that we'd like to make in the future, if you want to come back and talk about those, then we can certainly be amendable in the future. But you're right, Mr. Montez. You've given us plenty of time to think about it, to talk about it, to discuss it.
But, yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it only has one motion, so if it dies there, it dies there. I mean, if you want to make a motion to table, I think that trumps.
Does it trump?
I don't think so. But I'll second Mr. Montez's motion.
Roll call. Okay.
I didn't hear a second.
Tim snuck in a second real quick. Okay.
Mayor. I have to read the ordinance.
Hang on just one moment.
It's Tim. Mr. Eichmann. Lightning speed. Yep. Lightning speed.
Are you ready for the ordinance to be read?
Yes, sir.
Okay. City of Tontonity Town, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance to amend Section 30.05, Order of Business, and subsection E of Section 31.03, Committee at the whole in the Tontonity Town Municipal Code declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Now, roll call. Okay, who motioned it?
Danny motioned, and Tim seconded.
And this is a motion to approve as written?
Correct. Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Amber?
No.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
No.
Fails. I choose to vote.
It was, Rhonda, was that two to three? Then you can't vote. You can only vote to to adopt.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we don't have the table because it just failed, right?
Correct.
Is that right?
That is correct. Now, Mayor, let me correct what I just said because that sounded wrong. You can vote when your vote's necessary to pass, and since it was two to three, you can't, your vote would not have passed it, so.
Right. I was.
Sorry.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to E. An approval of a resolution on Highway 412 through 112 Water and Sewer Relocation Project. Mr. Clark.
I'll answer any questions. I think Mr. Gregory presented this for me in my absence at the Cal meeting, basically a change order for a approximately $200,000 reduction in cost, but it's all being paid by RDOT anyway, so if there's any questions, I'll.
Any citizen comments? Seeing none, counsel?
Yes, Mark and Mr. Latham had given us an email, and one of one of my things that spurred off was this topic. How are we coming with reimbursements? Or is the state caught up, or are we still in limbo?
I just sent them.
Another payout.
Two more reimbursement requests last Friday, and I think that's the last two I have. There's a couple that they missed, so I'm going to have to reconcile with them on on those, but they're almost caught up.
Do you know their outstanding balance?
Not right offhand, I doubt.
If you can email me, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, looking for a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Motion passes. Go on to F. An approval of a resolution for final payment on the 412 612 sewer extension. Mr. Clark. Sorry, you said right down.
It's okay. So, yes, this is the sewer extension on Liberty Road. As I told you, when we started that project, we were going to be using the final proceeds from the 2022 bond. We came to the end of that before we made final payments. So, we need to use, this is basically an approval, to use $37,000 out of our impact fee account to to finish that project.
Any questions from citizens? Seeing none, counsel?
I also have another question on that. I'm thinking outside the box. We used the 2022 bond funds that we had. What if we would have given that money back to the bond and not used it and used 100, or, you know, the in total balance of what we have in the impact fee? Could that have, could that have been done? That would have won, I think, in my theory, I'm thinking, would that have paid off, you know, the bond debt and then also used some of that impact money instead of just 37,000?
Yeah, we could have done that. It's the same as this surplus material that I have that I'm trying to sell.
Yeah.
We can't give that back until 2027, on the first, I forget what that opportunity of the bond.
The call.
The first call of the bond, yeah. So.
I'm just trying to, I'm in a very debt-free mentality. I'm like, oh, we could have used that and given them back the money we didn't use and then used our impact fees. Sometimes I hear we, you know, I'm always asking, can we use that impact money there? Can we use it there? And I'm like, no, no, you know, it's not, it's it's on, you know, there's certain restrictions if we can't use it. So, I'm trying to think of, could we have saved debt and given back that bond money and then used that impact money that we are limited to what we can use it on to pay more of that and save save some debt?
I think it's probably legal to do that. I don't know that it would have saved us much money as far as the interest on that amount goes, but.
Okay, that's just something.
That's probably a discussion for the COW. All right, I will need a motion.
Motion to approve.
A second. You seconded? No, no, I need a second. Okay. Roll call. You seconded?
I did.
Amber. Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Okay, move on to G. Approval of a resolution for purchase of wastewater pump.
Yes, as I think Mark may have, actually, Mark said in the Cal meeting, I was able to listen to some of it as I was, actually, I listened to all of it as I was driving back from Hot Springs and got home still in time to watch the last two hours. But anyway, I think Mark said that we were going to spend $12,000 to rebuild a pump and then buy another one. Actually, that was just quoting what it would cost to get the the old pump repaired would be $12,000. And it was, and this is a much better pump. We only paid about $14,000 for that other pump, so it's not worth putting $12,000 into. We're just going to replace it with this one for a little more money.
So, we're not, we are not going to repair the other?
No, we are not. No, we're not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so, what's the final number on this one?
19820, is that?
Yeah.
Was that number 20 plus tax? And earlier, there was a question about, is this going to be affected by acid if if?
Actually, I I believe Kenneth is incorrect in what they're adding into the leachate. Mr. Lovett, I'm sorry. What they're putting in is called biotrol, and it's a ferric sulfide, not, and the short answer is it's not going to affect the pumps. Now, years ago, before I even started here, when they first started up the South Penaltto Lift Station, they did have problems with the leachate eating eating the impellers out of the pumps. We have not had that issue since that time.
So, Mr. Ardemani brought up the point of a backup pump. Right now, as it sits, this is our only pump now anyways, isn't it? Or do you have additional pumps?
No, we have, there's, there's always two pumps in a lift station. So, we've got one in there. We've got the exact same pump, pumps at Barrington Lift Station. We've got two down there, and we have a spare.
Gotcha. So, we do have reserves.
Yes.
Just we're not going to fix the $12,000 repair.
Not going to fix the cheap one, right?
Gotcha.
With that, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Roll call. Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Motion passes. And H. An approval of a resolution on bid for the South Penaltto Drainage Project, Mr. Latham?
I think you have before you a resolution to approve Switzer, Switzer Construction. They were the low bidder of $122,690 to complete that work at the South Penaltto area. That's our first project that we are working on, and the 12 projects that our stormwater plan actually identified. So, request the counsel approve that.
Any citizen comments? Seeing none? Counsel?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, Miss.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
We've got a citizen that wants to.
Miss Nunn, go ahead and come up. Miss Miss Nunn. I did not see you. I'm so sorry.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Roll call. Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, go on to I, and approval of a resolution on bid for City Hall roof replacement. Mr. Latham?
Now, we advertised for bids. We got four bids for the replacement of the roof damage from the hail here at City Hall. And the low bidder was Arkansas, Arkansas River Valley Roofing. They would like to get started kind of ASAP if possible, since the snow is going to be blowing in here pretty soon. The low bid was 118,000. That does include the new guttering, which is kind of FYI for you. We did finally get a quote to do some waterproofing around this northern area, so the contract will actually start on that hopefully this week. They were out doing some marketing, so, but that's all.
So, the guttering and the waterproofing is not part of this bid?
No, the guttering is part of the roofing bid.
It is, okay, thank you. But the waterproofing is not?
No.
Okay.
So.
We'll see that in a separate.
Mr. Latham, I have one more question. When it comes to the solar panels, that was, we had discussed.
That's in the bid for them to remove them or replace.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, an approval of a resolution on GEO Tech Services Contract for Clink Road. Mr. Latham?
Yeah, although the tech service is actually under 20,000, we did want to bring it to you because it was an estimate amount in case it went over the 20,000, the mayor's ability to sign. As I mentioned, we're trying to do some evaluation of Clink Road, and this is part of it. The GEO Tech would actually do some drilling and some holes in the actual, actually go down on seven feet, believe it or not, figure out what kind of subsurface we've got, whether or not they can, we can be able to support some of the trucks that are going through. They're well over 80,000 pounds. So, request that counsel approve this so we can move forward. Thank you.
Motion? Oh, I'm sorry, citizens. Does anyone have a comment? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to K. An approval of ordinance amending Section 30.52 to allow the appointment of two or more deputy clerks. Ms. Ardemani?
This is a language change to Section 30.52.
Any citizen have a comment on this? I'm sorry, did you, any citizen have a comment on this? Counsel?
Mayor, I'm neither. I read the title.
Yes, sir.
City, City of Tontonity Town, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance to amend subsection B2 of Section 30.52, City Clerk Treasurer of the Tontonity Town Municipal Code declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
If there are no comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Move on to L. An approval of a resolution to appoint. I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's an emergency clause.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Make a motion to accept the emergency clause, yes.
I'll second that motion.
Amber, and then Larry, and then Tim.
I'll third it.
So, Amber did the initial. I made the motion, and Larry seconded it. And Tim seconded it? No, Larry seconded it.
I thirded it.
Larry's fast.
Okay, we ready to vote? Yes, roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Emergency clause passes. Yes, sir. Well, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. An approval of a resolution to appoint city staff as deputy clerks. Ms. Ardemani?
Well, I think we discussed this at the Cal pretty good, but also, in light of what Tim added earlier in the meeting, I really appreciate if you'd pass this.
Okay, do I have any, so it is Luann Jensen and Madeline Parker?
Yes.
And do I have any citizens that want to comment on this? Counsel?
I do just have a question. So, since it's a resolution, appointing these two by name, if ever we need to put a new person on there, we need a new resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know that.
And in, in the past, I know that, I know that it has been suggested that we not use names for that very reason. We'd have to come back every single time. But I also, did counsel, anybody else have any comments on this?
Well, we approved it the way it is.
Right.
I understand, you know, but as long as it's just a name change on a resolution, I understand, you know, but as long as it's just a name change on a resolution, it wouldn't be that difficult.
Agreed.
Okay, all right. So, the only concern that I have is whenever my previous assistant was out on maternity leave, I know that Maddie and Luann had come up here and worked from midnight till 3:00 in the morning just to try to get packets ready. I spoke with Mr. Spurlock and he said Maddie's going to be too busy to be able to put that on her plate.
To put this role on her plate or to be here at 3:00 AM?
Correct, to put this on, on her.
I just said I have concerns as well.
Yes, yes, and he said that she would not be able to do it once the permits.
She'll be more busy when the new permits.
Permits come in, yes.
But at this time, most of the duties will be on me because there's going to be three of us. I will be hands-on. Maddie's going to be more of the technical part, making sure that, computer-wise, because she's a little computer guru.
Yes, she is.
So, that will be her main part, so me and Luann's will be more of the agenda in the other stuff. So, there should not be a problem.
I do have, well, we'll be getting new job descriptions for them since that's changing their job descriptions, I'm just curious.
No, it's not changing their job description, it's just adding them as my helpers, my deputies as my helpers.
It's still changing what they're going to do.
Because I cannot be here to do all of this.
I understand, I'm just asking because that's going to be adding to their responsibility, so that would be a job change description.
Yes.
I've never worked before.
That and Mr. Latham mentioned.
You want to chime in on that?
I just want to understand to make sure that there's writing to know that they know that, I mean, I know they're accepting this, but in writing, because that seemed to have bit us in the past, so I'm just trying to.
Yeah, we'll get cleared up.
I thought I may add one thing, Mr. Latham mentioned last meeting that because more work would be added, it would likely mean more pay as well, so.
Yeah, in the discussion at Cal, I mentioned that the job descriptions would have to be updated.
Okay.
And I believe that was discussed, as Mr. Latham said that that would be something that would follow.
Okay, so we'll get those.
Mr. Spurlock, are you amenable to the idea?
Yeah, I'm fine, that's, that's my concern, the only thing I would.
Understood.
I don't believe any of them.
If there are no other discussion points, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I would help them out if something came down for them, they could not help.
Okay, wonderful. Then I will make a motion to approve, I'm, I'm just sorry.
Yes, you've got a second. Rock, paper, scissors? I did scissors. I'll do the second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Don't do that every day.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. All right, and M, an approval of a resolution to sell surplus materials, Mr. Clark?
Try your hardest, James, just try and, try and, try and.
Right, this is the material that we tried to, to sell by open bids and didn't receive anything, so if the council will allow, I'm going to advertise it for sale and the price of each item is listed on the exhibit. For example, under cost of pipe per foot, that's what we paid for it. 48-inch casing, we paid $195 a foot, that's what the cost to buy it will be, and so on.
That's what it was and that's what it will be.
That's what it was, what it will be, and what it is.
Okay, do I have any citizens that would like to comment on this? Counsel?
Yeah, I'm confused, James, I'm so sorry, you know how easily that happens. So, I'm looking at a bid tabulation with these, these companies that, that made offers, and I see what the cost of the pipe per foot, you're saying that what we're asking for is that, or that's what we paid?
That's what we paid and that's what we're going to be asking for it.
Okay.
Under that column of cost of pipe per foot.
Okay, and so, worst case, nobody buys it and we come back and talk about it another time, correct?
I think, yeah, I mean, we can do that, but I, I believe I'll have better luck selling it this way. Also, in the bid advertisement, I was trying to get them to take all of one category of pipe, and now we can just sell it a piece at a time if we have to, it'll take longer to get rid of it, but I think it will, it will sell.
Cool, can we have a garage sale this weekend?
Maybe, it's going to rain.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, if there are no further comments.
I'll second.
Roll call. Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to N, an approval to, an approval to ordinance to reestablish the position of the building official.
Yeah, that's me, right?
That is you.
Yeah, so as we talked about at the Cal, the building official was, was removed at the mayor's request back in June, I think, and we always, you know, try to be as amenable as we can. I know we went along with that then, but unfortunately, in the state code and all the fire codes, it talks about building official over and over and over again, and in our own codes, it keeps pointing back to a building official and we don't have one. So, I figured we had two ways to deal with that. One was to go back into our own code and rework it, and the other was to just put it back in so that it works everywhere else, and that's the only reason why that's here.
I, I believe whenever I asked for that to be removed, it was in the wrong section, it was under elected officials.
Okay, and it was removed completely instead of just being removed from elected officials, but I don't, Justin, is it going to go back under that elected official's position or is it going to be in the right place?
Well, I, I drafted this just to go back because that's what I thought you wanted, so.
Good enough for now.
But, you know, there is a.
We can tweak it here, can't we?
Yeah, there is a definition section in your, is it 150, 153, 152, where it, it might reside as well, but I, I thought I heard from the Cal that you wanted it put back, so.
That is correct, that is, you heard that correctly.
You did hear correctly, we just didn't expand on it properly, yeah.
Can't we just add a little bit of verbiage to make that clear?
I'm absolutely amenable to that. Again, I, I don't, I don't have any particular affinity to, to the title, I'm just trying to make it make sense. I'm looking up that code right now. Well, it would, it would not be there, would it?
No.
Well, I'm, I'm fine going forward with, with how it is and then we can tweak it later. I don't know how much of a problem that causes, if, if anything, I suspect we didn't have problems before, we won't have problems now, and we've got another year before any elections, so we've got time to rectify that and make sure that it's not an elected official between now and next November.
Would it, would it even help, I mean, that, I'm fine with that as well.
Right.
If you just added verbiage to A, position of the building official for the city of Tonton Town, which is not an elected position, is hereby created, would that do nothing? Would that solve the problem? Would that make it?
Sounds like an elegant solution, I'm fine with it. Counselor?
So, I think what we need to do is to amend the title to say, an ordinance adopting, an ordinance creating the position of building official, declaring emergency and for other purposes. And in the second whereas, to reinstate, you need to strike section 20.53.
The entire section?
Just that wording, section 20.53.
Okay.
To, and then, and the third one, the same. Hold on, give me one second and I'll, I'll do it here. Hold on, give me one second and I'll, I'll do it here. Okay. We have a couple changes. The title would be an ordinance to adopt the position of building official for the city of Tonton Town, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. The second recital would strike the word section 2.53, building official.
So, that's section one?
Excuse me, section 2.20.53, which strike that, those two words.
Okay.
The third recital would strike the word section 30.52, building official, and replace it with, adopt the position of building official as set forth below.
Okay.
Section one would be amended to remove section 20.20.53, building official, just to say that the Tonton Town Municipal Code is hereby amended as set forth in the attached exhibit A. And in the emergency clause, section 20.53, building, would be struck. So, that would place it, that would just be, make it a general ordinance that would then, could then be codified in another area of the code.
Sure, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with that, I'm also fine if you guys feel more comfortable pushing it out to the Cal, but I think that that fixes the issue.
Did I hear a, a motion on the table?
No.
Okay.
Also, official in the heading is spelt wrong.
It is, there are two Fs in official, you're correct, that is officially misspelled.
Well, but that's, that's being struck if it.
So, the ordinance, the heading is now an ordinance to adopt?
The position of building official.
The position of building official, then we still need to spell official correctly? We just strike 30.53 and say position of. I, I'm happy to make a motion to approve it with those changes.
I'll second that. Roll call. Misty?
Yes.
Daniel? Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we need an emergency?
We do.
No, not, it's a resolution, so there is no such thing now.
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Well, it is an ordinance, there is an emergency clause.
I'd like to make a motion to implement the emergency clause, please.
I'll second. Roll call. Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
No.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Will you be submitting, sending me a new one?
I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next comments from Alderman, we'll start Mr. Burris.
Thank you. I, I always appreciate when people come to speak. There's a lot going on and, and I know that some of you sometimes don't like my stance, others of you never like my stance, it's all right, but I believe that you should have the right to speak, and I appreciate you coming for that. We are your elected representatives and you have every right to speak to us in a public forum. If you are a citizen, I will always support your First Amendment rights because we've never had a king in America, we're not going to start now. Because of that reason, we have a beautiful Christmas tree that we bring into this room in the holiday season, it is gorgeous, but I want to propose a change to that tree. I stand opposed to the decorative crown that we put on the top of that tree, which we have perched there, it's lovely, but I believe that it is un-American, and I hope that it'll be replaced this year by something that's a little more appropriate to our American system of government. I was also disturbed this week that, or into last week, that somebody on staff who had no knowledge of the law claimed to have been personally contacted by our attorney regarding changing our operating procedure, so that we would need to get multiple council persons to add agenda items, that we would need a council person and a co-sponsor on this body of six. That was a lie, our attorney never made that suggestion, and that's concerning to me. We need transparency and we need honesty, and I hope that we can all, everywhere in this building, strive for that.
Mr. Ardemani?
I don't have a lot, with the government shutdown, you know, we can't do a whole lot, so, no, I appreciate everybody coming out, we've got a lot of stuff on our agenda and hopefully get, get through it all and, and get, get this town rolling in the right direction, more so. Thank you.
Kavara? Yes, just thank you all for coming out this evening and have a good night.
Ms. Piazza?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. In spirit of transparency, I wanted to publicly declare that I did donate my $300 that I was paid due to code to go towards the new sign at the museum as a city department, so I gave my money back to the city in helping them get a new sign. So, I just wanted to be transparent, as I did say that I did not want to be paid for that, so I did give that back to the city, so thank you all and have a good night.
Mr. Montez? Mr. Montez?
Mr. Montez? Thanks, everybody, for coming out, thanks for giving your input on tonight's agenda. A couple of things that kind of struck me on the agenda is the carbon chicken reimbursement. If waste management's paying for it, I don't know why the city got billed for it, I feel like maybe they should have just passed the bill on to them because there's just things that can go in different directions than we think, and now we've handed out money and we may or may not get that money back. I think we have some instances in our history that we can point back to where we've given money out and then haven't gotten services back to us, so this is another thing that we're just throwing money out and hopefully waste management will be a good neighbor and do their part, but I don't know, a lot of us in here can attest that, you know, we're not getting proper leachate done, we have pumps that are getting tore up by what's going through those pipes and through those pumps. In the, in the past, it's not happening now, but it has happened in the past, so we'll, we'll see how that unfolds. It is budget time, so thank you, Mr. Latham, for bringing up the budget, and I expect, I'm excited to see what we've got come in our way. I know that there's a couple emails have circulated talking about some of the coded language in that, and I hope that, that, that information's been heated and that we can get some better explanations of what these items actually correlate to, so I look forward to that. I also want to throw a shout out to Mr. Washkowiac, I hope he's having fun wherever he's at, but we missed him here tonight. And then I also, if I don't get a chance to say it, I want to thank Justin for his service here. I know we've got some separation occurring, so I thank you for your service and all that you've given to the city of Tonton Town in your time, and that's all I've got.
Mayor's comments. All right, I listened to the last meeting and I was not able to be here, but I want to address everything that was on that meeting that had, what people had questions about. Transparency and accountability remain my top priorities and I appreciate the opportunity to provide these updates. The leachate concerns, that was a lot at the last meeting, we had a long discussion or you guys had a long discussion on that. Concerns have been raised about the leachate gases affecting our community. I want to assure you that we are actively addressing these issues. In addition to the odor neutralization efforts using carbon chicken, we have received legal guidance on further steps the city can take. Carbon chicken has developed a specialized product to mitigate, and as you heard tonight, he did speak about that, and the possible gases and chemical emissions. This technology has been presented at the, both the Boston Mountain Solid Waste Committee and the Tonton Town meeting. We have documented the emissions from the scrubber, which was installed on October 10, 2025, and the emissions are being documented after the scrubber has been installed. The last test results have not been received yet, as you heard earlier, he will be hopefully getting them this week. And waste management is paying for that cost, and I do believe Mr. Clark talked about that at the meeting before last. Animal abandonment on Old Highway 68. We are aware of ongoing issues with animals being abandoned along Old Highway 68. Chief Jenison has consulted with Heather Armstrong, while Tonton Town does not currently have a local ordinance, Arkansas state law does apply. Under the Arkansas Code Title V, Chapter 62, abandoning, abandoning animals is a misdemeanor offense. It's known as the Daisy Law. This legislative, legislation empowers law enforcement to intervene in cases of animal cruelty or neglect, abandonment is neglect. However, enforcing this requires citizens' help. The police department cannot go out and arrest someone, an individual responsible, without either witnessing or obtaining a tag number, a vehicle tag number. We need to help, we need the help of the citizens living near Ms. Armstrong's facility. If you see a vehi, a vehicle or an individual dropping off an animal, please take a picture and/or get a license plate number and call the Tonton Town Police. And if you send me the information, I will be glad to put it on our Facebook page, and I need the information. Concerning the audit findings, again, corrective and actions, I would like to go over some of the ones that was brought up last week, I'm sorry, the last meeting. The recent state audit identified several areas for improvement in our purchasing and financial procedures. Fire department, the $1.33 million emergency vehicles was purchased without competitive bidding as required by law. After approval of council, I purchased the fire truck without going out for bid. Although the council approved waiving the bid, the approval was made after the purchase. I should have waited for the council's approval to waive the bid. The purchase was made due to high demand and limited availability. It will not happen again. Police department purchases, vehicles totaling $50,340 and firearms totaling $56,023 were purchased without competitive bids. The council did approve waiving the bid at a later date. IT equipment, the city paid $15,684 for IT equipment, but not all items were received. We are actively working to recover the missing equipment, which consists of one Dell Optiplex, one Acer 27-inch firewall, Cisco AP Dell tower server, Windows server, computer UPS, US, USPs, Datto, and a cloud management switch, and the setup for the domain. On the legal fees, on July 11, 2023. On the legal fees, on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the city dispersed fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand eighty dollars for legal services related to oppositions to the EcoVista landfill expansion. Although this amount was fully reimbursed by a member of the citizens group on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the initial payment by the city was authorized by me. Not realizing that I needed a separate contract, even through the work of this attorney performed, was an extension of the work that our attorney was performing in relation to the Waste Management case. University of Arkansas donation, the city donated three thousand five hundred dollars to support the film Cries From the Cottonfield without a formal contract. I acknowledge this error, and I will ensure proper protocol in, in the future. Backdated check, a check dated December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, was used to pay a January twenty twenty-four invoice to avoid impacting the twenty-four budget. This practice will not be repeated. To address these issues, the city adopted and is currently purchasing, I'm sorry, following the purchasing procedure manual, to ensure compliance with the law and the best practices moving forward. Regarding the lawsuit filed by Mr. Wagner, over fifteen thousand eighty dollars in legal fees, I was contacted by the municipal league attorney, who informed me that Mr. Wagner's attorney had offered to draw up the lawsuit if I personally paid one thousand five hundred dollars to his attorney. I paid the amount requested. I received the settlement paper, paperwork the day before it went out in the newspaper. I'm sorry for these mistakes, I've learned a lot, and I believe tightening up and following procedure will help me and us in a better place as the city grows. I remain committed to serving the people of Tontie Town with integrity and transparency. Thank you for your continued trust engagement in our community's future. Okay, I believe Mr. Latham had gone over everything that the city is, the projects the city is doing whenever you were speaking, I thank you for that, and I acknowledge that. Mr. Eichmann, would you like to say anything?
No, just wanted to thank everybody, really enjoyed working with, with all of you, and it's been, it's been a while, we've done a lot of great things, I was thinking, like my first meeting, we were crammed into a room that, I don't know where that was, it was somewhere over here, but where it was at the very corner, and a very tight, tight little space, but a lot has happened in Tontie Town, a lot that you all should be, should be very proud of, and, you know, there are a lot of things out there that are going on too. You can see this agenda, there was, you know, a lot of, a lot of things dealing with streets, water and sewer, I know you got a lot of good things going on with your parks, they're always full, and you got a great community, so wanted to thank you, and thank the employees that I've worked a lot with over the years, and, you know, wish you the best.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Justin. All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.